Ms. Saram, here.
Ms. Saram, here. Mr. Carter-Sullivan.
Here. So we'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's budget meeting. Since our original preliminary budget on March 19, 2019, I vote for the House and the House Budget Meeting, made up of members of the Board of Education. And just for clarification, the House Committee is, by definition, a committee formed for a very specific purpose or need. The purpose of this committee was created to work with the superintendent and the board administrator to better understand the impacts of the budget as we approach tonight's final budget hearing. The goal was to prioritize all the areas in the budget with ones, twos, and threes. One identified as areas of the budget that must be continued or implemented based on mandates required for the curriculum and instruction. Two were identified as areas in the budget which need further conversation with each building on additional efficiencies that could be made to maintain our educational standards. And three are identified areas in the budget which need to be examined by the management team to either discontinue, reduce program, or postpone implementation. Tonight, Dr. Blaser and Mrs. Yen are presenting our final budget for 2019-2020 school year. And the board's part of our resolutions will go to the passage of the final preliminary budget. So we're going to come onto that side, and we're going to start our presentation.
Lucy's had a couple nominations paper from playoffs. Corey Young. She did she get that one.
Really?
Yeah, the one who sells.
Yeah. I love having her in class.
Yeah, she's cool. She's, uh... She's like her dad.
Who?
Like the one.
Yeah, there's some subs that are... That go over so I don't have... She's kind of...
I've had your daughter sell like four times, and she hasn't said a single... At her...
And she's polite.
I'm not going to the bathroom. I probably do that.
You'll see if I can change just a little bit.
Can you hear me? So, welcome to the public budget hearing for the 2019-2020 budget for the public school year. If you are here for the adoption of the tentative budget, some of these slides will look familiar. If not, we'll be explaining them as we go through. So what is the budget process? The budget is the financial expression of the district's educational goals, which translates the education vision and needs of the community into dollars. This next chart shows you how the budget process works. Where we begin, we'll show you. So the leadership and command and administration principals are talking to their staff. Board members are talking to their staff to formulate what their needs are going to be for the following year. We are meeting with them, and by we, I mean our cabinet, the superintendent, the self-director of the curriculum, the assistant V A. We are meeting with them throughout the year to review their priorities and their submissions to arrive at a tentative budget. Throughout that process, there is a lot of conversation about programs, what the district needs to continue, what we need to take a second look at, and programs that we would like to add. Each and every budget line item is reviewed in depth to look for deficiencies and make the determinations as to what final budget we're in. The budget, the tentative budget, is reviewed by the city county superintendent to make sure that the document, which is about eighty-eight pages, that is submitted to the state, is compliant and compliant and meets all the standards and criteria. That budget is also advertised. It was done itself in the Dumbly Sun for the public. We continue to have discussions. And as the board president stated, the former House Committee this year to review the budget in great detail along with us so we can present it and see what it's going. And here we are with adoption of this argument. The board plays a significant role in the adoption of the budget each and every year, helping to set the priorities. They develop a budget calendar and review that calendar. That calendar is our guideline to meet various milestones throughout the process and actually starts as early as last summer. We communicate through the year with the budget with the board on a regular basis, especially in the finance committee meetings. And then the community starts the tentative budget. So the first section of the budget I'd like to review is the revenue section. This chart gives you a comparison between the current school year to the 1920 budget, starting with our fund balance. Fund balance is generated from the previous two-year, from a budget two years ago. So there's a slight reduction from last year to... Or this year to next year of about $300 million. The goal is to try and make that money consistent so you don't have spikes from year to year which you may or may not be able to maintain. The next line is the tax levy. The tax levy is going from fifty-five million to fifty-seven point six million in the new budget. We generate tuition revenue from other districts that they sent a student or two. We don't have a lot of space, so we're very limited on that income. And we also generate tuition from some of our staff members who live outside of Nutley but want to send their children near to our schools. And most of the revenue is generated from our preschool integrated program. So we're looking at, based upon the enrollment numbers, an increase in that revenue of about $20,000. In addition to an increase in the capital reserve interest, now that we're all saying time in one week and our interest rates, we anticipate an increase there of about $1,000. Our miscellaneous revenue is generated from renting out our facilities, from the use of our facilities for our extended day program. We rate money that we get from the federal government based upon our technology spending. And participate revenue and any other form of revenue that is outside of the other lines that we'll see here. So again, we're looking at an increase there of about $35,000. Stay aid, our increase for 1920 from the state is $399,990. Extraordinary aid is revenue that we apply for each and every year, and it is for all the students who go out of the state for half costs that exceed $50,000 per student. And they have met other criteria such as needing a one-to-one aid or a supplement program. That program is... That app... Those applications are overseen by the Director of Special Services, Mrs. Helen Will Marita, and Assistant V A John Corr. And each and every year, they have been able to bring into the district additional revenue. So we are proposing an addition of $289,000 in that revenue for next year's program. Semi-Medicaid is a requirement from the federal government. Basically, when we receive our stay aid, they give us the number that we should be projecting in terms of revenue. So the increase is $27,000 for next year. And that brings us to a total general fund budget for 1920 of $68,499, which is $2.8 million overlapped, over the curve. Developing this budget was extremely challenging. I always look at it kind of like a crossword puzzle or jigsaw puzzle. We have to put all the pieces in the right places and make sure everything balances. And it's always been a challenge that has been one that we were able to arrive at fairly easily and meet the revenue that we were able to generate. I have to say, this year was a lot more challenging. We spent multiple hours reviewing this budget. We started out with a deficit of just a little over $2 million. We had to look at every little cranny to find that money. And here is a list of some of the areas where we have found reductions. The reductions came from not being able to give every single requested item, not being able to provide some of those funds, having to make actual reductions. So going through here, we've had to make reductions in our overall instructional classroom supplies, textbooks, and library materials of just a little over $2,000. Our instructional software programs, we had to eliminate $21,000 of that out of our operating budget, but we were able to absorb $17,000 through our extended day enrichment programs. Professional development consultants, we reduced that by $29,000. Curriculum writing, which our staff works on each and every year, varies parts of our curriculum as we do updates. That received a reduction of about $9,000. Our technology budget took a significant hit for next year of $154,000. How we are able to do that and continue with our Chromebook one-to-one initiative is instead of purchasing the Chromebooks outright, we will be leasing the Chromebooks as we did in the eighteen-nineteen survey. Our anticipated number of additional Chromebooks today is 650 Chromebooks. In the athletic budget, various line items, the reduction there is $21,000, but it does not eliminate any of the teams that we currently have. Buildings and grounds, there was a reduction there of $20,000 in supplies and funds for outside contractors. We had requests for various forms of classroom furniture that we were unable to fulfill in the amount of $31,000. Office of miscellaneous supplies were reduced by about $9, and we were able to realize a significant savings on the negotiated help that we knew. The original number was a sixteen percent increase. That number came down to nine percent, which saved us $500,000. And lastly, personnel restructuring amounts to 1.25 million. I'm now talking with Dr. Blaser, who will be more detailed about that and some of the additional programs that we will have finished. Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Karen.
So, personnel restructuring. This is then probably our biggest challenge. As you can see, it's the largest amount and the largest number offsetting that original two-plus million dollar deficit. This reduction affects fifteen positions throughout the district, pre-K to twelve. And I have to say that every single person involved in the development of this budget went diligently, and I mean diligently, to end up with only 2.5 of those positions as being actually reduced, meaning a reduction in force. Remaining twelve and a half positions represent classrooms that have then collapsed with larger class sizes. Staff transferred to other grade levels or other buildings to fill holes left by retirement or other openings, other needs. And in that way, we maintain the staff that we had and we got in so much. And like I said, we minimize the number of staff that are actually a reduction in force. The personnel restructuring is always the most challenging piece, believe it or not, that we're going through because they're actually people. And I don't think that we can take that incredibly seriously. As far as... As far as the highlights, with all of those cuts and having the ability to use that insurance waiver and bed cap, we are able to have different programs in the district than if we did not. All of these children would have to go out of the district, which would cost significantly more than a $2 million deficit that we started with. So with this current budget proposal, we do gain a kindergarten ADA class, another autistic class here in the district, preschool disabilities class, which again, growth in that programming has been significant. And to send all those children out of the district does us a good service when they're starting in pre-K and we have them until they're twenty-one years old. And finally, a preschool, a RISE program, and RISE is an acronym that I'm not even going to attempt right now. But again, that's... If you look on our agendas every single month, you're going to see approvals for students who are out of the community, students who are working and traveling to get authentic experiences, work experiences. These are our students that again have grown through the Nutley Public Schools in our autism program. And this allows us to not only keep these students within our district, within the Nutley community, and having those experiences, but allows us to bring several students who have had to go out of the district back into the district. So these, these are huge benefits, not only for the students, but for our programming over a long-term period of time. It's really a long-range plan for students and for student success, especially in our special education programs. So Karen's going to rejoin me. And see, this is our big pie chart that we keep bringing out to show you. Thank you, Dr. Blaser.
Basically, what this pie chart shows is the orange section in purple, is the total amount we spend on salaries and graduation. And this represents sixty-one point three percent of our budget. The next thing is the orange section on the lower left bottom is the cost of benefits. Again, that's about twenty-one percent of our budget. And as we move forward through the pieces shrinking, tuition, health, and related services is the gray area of seven point eight percent. And each and every one of those other sections that gets smaller and smaller and smaller as we go up, utilities, athletic budget, transportation, buildings and grounds, educational and administrative software, professional learning, library and textbook supplies, professional development, and finally, our property and liability insurance. So you can see how it becomes very difficult when we're trying to look at a $2 million deficit to try and find that $2 million. So much of those pieces of pie are so tiny we couldn't just pass. So this is the budget resolution that the board will be adopting this evening. The general fund budget is $68 million. Our special revenue fund, which is money that we receive from federal government via DEA, every student succeeds act, and the Perkins Grant, which is one of our high school programs, is $1.6 million. Our debt service fund is $3.56 million. That is the money that needs to be repaid for the bonds that were taken out from various construction projects over the years. That's the balance for payments that need to be made next year, which gives us a total budget of just a little over $73 million. The general fund tax levy being raised is $57.6 million. And the tax levy repaying the debt service is another $2.8 million. We're a total tax levy of $60.4 million. So the general fund tax levy on the average home, which is assessed at $318,343, is an increase of $178.79, which equates to five and a half cents per hundred valuation of your loan. And the debt service tax levy on that same average-sized home is an increase of $11.85 for .0037 cents for every hundred valuation. And with that, that concludes our presentation. And we will be taking questions on the resolution before the board adopts it.
Now, all right, we now have a portion of our meeting where we allow members in the public to address the board in this session. We allow questions or comments on the board's resolution to address tonight's agenda. Our board regulations, six-to-one, allow twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after others wishing to speak on a topic of your turn. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy or abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with this conclusion before you take your microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard on the budget resolution please come forward? See, you got it. Mr. Uzinski, would you take the resolution approval?
Beers Office of Department of Education approves the budget for the 2019-2020 school year, which includes the use of the bed cap in the amount of six million... I'm sorry, six hundred thirty-three thousand... Six hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars to meet minimum educational standards. This need must be completed by the end of the budget year and cannot be deferred or implemented over a longer period of time. I still move the budget.
Second.
Discussion. Well, Paul, let's conclude.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaya?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Reiden?
No.
Mrs. Salar?
Yes.
Ms. Saram?
Yes, and I would also like to say, due to additional information regarding the district's needs, received subsequent to the last budget vote, I vote yes to this budget recommendation.
Mr. Carter-Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to hear me do this one more time. This is going to enter the regular resolutions that we have. So we have a portion of our meeting where we allow members in the public to address the board in this session. We allow questions or comments on the board's resolution to address tonight's agenda. Our board regulations, six-to-one, allow twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after others wishing to speak on a topic of your turn. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy or abusive, obscene, or relevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with this conclusion before you take your microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard please step forward? Okay, see, you got it. Mrs. Dancheck-Martin, would you take academic?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move on. Academic resolutions are going to be moved right now.
Discussion. Well, Paul, let's conclude.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaya?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Reiden?
Yes.
Mrs. Salar?
Yes.
Ms. Saram?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sullivan?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Uzinski, would you take finances, please?
Administration, I am so... I move the administration's resolution one to two.
Second.
Discussion. Well, Paul, let's conclude.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaya?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Reiden?
Yes.
Mrs. Salar?
Yes.
Ms. Saram?
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiden, would you take the finances resolution, please? Yes, brother. On the finances resolution number three, I'd like to take a left. The first discussion will be accepted. Okay. Any discussion on that? Or just additional information?
Second.
Well, Paul, let's conclude for table?
Hold on, I'm trying, I'm sorry. One, two, three. Do you want the other resolutions in the papers?
Yes.
Take one, okay.
Well, Paul.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaya?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Reiden?
Yes.
Mrs. Salar?
Yes.
Ms. Saram? Mr. Carter-Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. President, that being said, I'd like to move on. Balance of finances is listed as... Discussion. Well, Paul, let's conclude.
Mr. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaya?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Reiden?
Yes.
Mrs. Salar?
Yes.
Ms. Satter.
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Salton.
Yes.
Mr. Schiller, would you move personnel, please?
Thank you, President, I would move a personnel resolution one for every-
Survey. Discussion. Roll call is concluded. Who's second?
Mr. Huthenski.
Mr. Huthenski.
Mr. Dan Chek Martin.
Yes.
Mr. DeMaya.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Reilly.
Yes.
Mrs. Schiller.
Yes.
Ms. Satter.
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Salton.
Yes.
Ms. Satter, would you take policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I would move a policy resolution one stated.
Second. Discussion. Roll call is concluded.
Mr. Dan Chek Martin.
Yes.
Mr. DeMaya.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Reilly.
Yes.
Mrs. Schiller.
Yes.
Ms. Satter.
Yes.
Mr. Carter-Salton.
Yes.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school matters covered relation allow for three minutes for these communications. Once again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and sign with this conclusion before you take your microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard please step forward? I do have a case of voting for that chair, please bear with me one second. And looks like the first one off the list is our very own Stephen Breck.
Hello. Good luck. Okay, so our comment, when he went to the road. Okay, is this good?
Yeah.
Walk close to it. Okay, I'll just, okay, I got it. All right, I'll just start everything. In our society, we show our love through money. If you want to know how much your society values a person, just look at how much they make every year. We talk about how education is important all day long, but just look at the numbers. Despite all our talk of loving our educators, being a teacher becomes tougher and tougher each year. As a student body, I argue that we owe everything to our teachers. Some show up for us an hour before school and others stay back for hours every day after school has ended. Our teachers have shown us how much they love us. There were extra underpaid hours sacrificing their profitable time for our sakes. So as students, when we hear about the injustices of teachers you're facing, it hurts. Don't let this confuse you. We are not here because any teacher told us to be here. It's an insult to our passion and intellect as a student body to think that we will be inactive, to think that we will be active community members only when told to do so. It's an insult to the education our teachers have given us to believe that we are not receptive enough to dissect social problems on our own. Our teachers have taught us to be critical thinkers as any good teacher should, and no more. To dismiss our passion as the masterful puppeteering of a teacher is to announce to the world how little you think of the youth. But trust me, we are powerful. We say the youth are the future and that we must invest in them. We say that we value our teachers and respect their struggles. We say that nothing is a wonderful time which takes care of its own. I don't doubt the conviction behind these words, but it looks to me like we say a lot of things. But where's the action? As a student, I can fully guarantee that the best way to better the education of our students is to better the circumstances for our teachers. I wouldn't be where I am in life if it wasn't for the extra effort that they have put into their work. At the core of our education isn't infrastructure, regulations, or chronicles, as important as they may be. It's our teachers. As a society, we express how much we value someone's time and efforts through money. So let's put our money in our mouthpiece and show our teachers just how much we truly care.
Next on the list.
Yes, Mark!
Next on the list, we have Eve Bartel.
Hello, I'm Eve Bartel, and I hope you're all having a nice night. I'm vice president of student council. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. These teachers do so much for us. They come in early and stay during their lunches to help us with work we struggle to understand in class. They ask us if we are feeling okay when we're looked at and are willing to talk with us even if we say we aren't. They truly care about us. Throughout the past years, the impact that so many teachers have had on me is immeasurable. And I'm not just talking about in high school. From elementary school to today, I've always felt the gap remaining in good education because of the people that I talk with. And it makes my heart to see any of my teachers, past or present, struggle because I know that they are worth so much more. My teachers currently are the best thing about that high school. I'm going to university Delaware with a full ride in future months, and I'm excited. But I can confidently say that without all of my teachers, the lessons they've taught me, the kindness they've brought me, and the letters of recognition, I would not have gotten the offer that I did. Without them, I would not have known to play me as a mother. Without them, I would not be the person I am today. I do not claim to know the process of negotiating a contract or what goes into it, but I do know one thing. These teachers are investment worth making. Thank you.
Next person is Samantha Daly.
Hello, everyone. My name is Samantha Daly. I'm currently a sophomore at the high school, and I advise about my thoughts. Being a teacher is one of the hardest shots in the world. A teacher has the critical and oftentimes difficult responsibility of pushing each of their students to their limits in order to see them all succeed both in and out of the classroom. Teachers provide the world with our doctors, critical figures, lawyers, and hardworking individuals. Teachers plant seeds of success into their students. In this way, teachers are just as important as doctors, the lawyers, and the functioning members of society, they agree. Every single one of my teachers, from kindergarten to now, has inspired me in so many different ways and is talking valuable lessons I keep with me to this day. Teachers have taught me to keep going, to never give up, even in the face of adversity. Teachers have taught me that I am capable of whatever I set my mind to in and out of the classroom. As a high school student, there are a lot of extracurricular activities and sports that are open to all students. I tend to spread myself too thin sometimes, trying to participate in both sports and teacher at the same time. During one of these times, one of my teachers pulled me aside and told me a story from a kid's mind and going through a similar situation. He told me, no matter how many times you get knocked down, you get right back up again. The next day, I showed up at school and thought about his words. Instead of giving up, I decided to push through just like he did and prove that I was good enough. If he had not so far as me or helped me in that moment with me, I would not be the person I am, standing in front of you today. I do not know the entirety of the contract situation, but what I do know for certain is that our teachers deserve the world. The teachers in the non-education system care about each and every one of their students. They don't simply care about if we did our homework or not, or if we aged our exams. They care about our growth as individuals, about our problems outside of the classroom, about our lives. Our teachers have provided so much for our students, it's time for us to support them in our time of need and hear about it.
Next up is Abby Thurston.
Hi, I'm Abby Thurston, Abby Junior. Um, I'm Abby, what? It's all right, just speak right. The last time I was here, I spoke about recommendation letters, and I couldn't regret that because it only added fuel to the fire of controversy when my intention was to throw all advice away at teachers. Tonight, I appear because that is behind us, and enough is enough. I appear tonight because as a student, we now share our teachers' frustration and have had enough. I'm with you as the Board of Education, treat teachers as they should be treated. When with you, both they understand and respect the contribution they have made to our community, when we allow them to be paid for what they truly deserve, when we quite freely realize that now is the time to settle. Teachers work day in and day out, tirelessly educating all kinds of students, and constantly encouraging us to be the best that we can be. They will always go above and beyond for their students, even at the sacrifice of their own personal time. Whether it's stay at their school or on their lectures, helping us with personal issues and giving us advice, or even just taking a few extra bits to check in on us or our practical conversation. Teachers are always looking to help their students however they can. Their job never truly stops, as they are constantly thinking about lesson plans and always breathing when they can, even if it's taking time away from friends and family, or even avoiding taking complete breaks. The least these incredible people can get in return is of their contract. Recently, in one of my classes, our teacher found she missed her four jobs and mentioned she was getting paid more in two thousand and eleven than she is now. Teachers who work so unbelievably hard for us and this town deserve so much better than that. By not settling this issue, we're not only hurting teachers, but are also hurting this town by not pulling it up to the standard they should be on doing, which is totally shitting us of a good reputation. If you, as the Board of Education, truly want to better our schools and our town as a whole, and that a good start is actually with the teachers and finally settling this catch-up, thank you.
To the Board of Education, read, my name is Richard Gitts. I reside at U of U, Los Angeles. Last time I was here was cooler and I was dressed in layers. It's May now, and weather's changed for the better. What hasn't changed for the better, required, is that the contracts that the team was nothing. I have lived a working class life and understand the concern blown on my way in headshack and facehacking. Data's may have to be cut short some nights, while one medical emergency can precontinue all the finances of the family. I had that medical emergency, and I had to work several times in response to a domino economic situation. The teachers of nothing, many of our kids dependent on that, deserve knowing they're working a class lifestyle. I know many teachers who work multiple jobs, with one of my teachers specifically working four jobs. If there is ever more need for evidence that one, even super incomes not even enough, we can find it in another school system. These are people who hear hard work paid off, but haven't created a present, and these conditions present are conditions which may form in the future bring about a major need for a contract that will protect teachers, their families, and those depending on that. As I mentioned, the last time I was here, teachers have made great strides to improve our academic, ensure the stability of our mental health, with some even going as far to ensure we are fed for lunch. Teachers become a second set of parents for us. Creating specific examples, my executive government politics teacher, Mr. Peter Goryo, offered after-school hours reaching from early morning to late at night to ensure we are prepared for our AP test. As I mentioned, last time I was here, Mr. Stoff has been the sole reason behind the major improvements in my math abilities. My English teacher, Mr. McNoah, took great care of me one day. I learned him to blow my eyes out whenever he concerns an outlet to resolve my issues. One of my former teachers in attendance, Mr. Sedono, believed in my abilities to reach and succeed with AP English. Teaching me invaluable information can neutralize any general budget, which again shows how teachers shape the lives of students to do better. On a second matter, non-education schools are a major pull factor for this town. My uncle and mother raved about the school system and how very close the teachers have proved that to me. And not only this, but other educational issues, such as housing facilities. And once that overcrowded spaces in classrooms, no potential challenge the teachers have this time managed to hold a doc. It is imperative we issue a broadening of teacher contract results, so the non-Board of Education can focus on tackling other major problems that spread in one of our town's fastest and strongest institutions. On a final note, I'd like to make connections to a story my father told me when I was younger. My father, my twin brother, and my grandfather once found themselves in a hotel with an active emergency related to a fire. In my father's hotel room, panic broke out, while my grandfather maintained his calmness and evacuated his children. I have sustained level of calmness from both sides. I acknowledge this is always a contentious issue, negotiations which are once kind of great, easily be dealt by these Russians. Thank you, and I'm a great man.
Next is Sean Landoza.
Good evening, Board of Education, and I'm here today. My name is Sean Landoza, and I currently live in California. The last time I was here, it was pretty much back, and I read a statement on how our teachers have changed our lives. And there was definitely more than what I think of. But yeah, I have a few more things I would say about the schools, teachers, and the town itself. The people in this town have given such incredible applause, with such amazing teachers that have changed the lives of the best students in this whole world. I can't say enough on how many teachers have changed my life last year. I wouldn't be able to be standing here if it wasn't for the glory of the need to deliver love to do, and if it wasn't for the teachers, like this last part of my story, discussion of the same history of the glory of the class. So many of these teachers have done so much for us, and that they deserve more than what we have done. Most of them have done more than teachers. All of them have given us inspiration, hope, a reason that all this school is born and just born. It's also a place where you can be with the people who make you happy, the people who call you your friends, your best friends, your brothers, sisters, the people who made an impact on your life. This leaving one another in effect unless there was a situation to take care of. One thing, the teachers have made an astounding impact, and they deserve to have better acquisitions than they want now. Especially if we have such smart, polite, outstanding, we're making such smart, polite, outstanding students. Being said, every teacher here has been positive impact on everyone here, and we are hoping that you remember or see how important teachers are to us. Everyone has at least got one teacher that has impacted, inspired, and driven them to become a better person, to grow and learn new skills. We wouldn't be standing here telling you about how many of New York's teachers are, and how well the poor in New York, everything that has changed our lives. Thank you for your attention, I'll do that.
Next up is Adrianne Minikini.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon to the members of the Board of Education and the people of the community. My name is Adrianne Minikini. I am currently a sophomore at the high. I am a student that reached to the protest on Friday. I am here to speak to you all today to continue to express my views on the issue regarding teacher contracts. I have been informed of this issue for the past two weeks and have gathered the various information. Teachers have been working with no contracts since July of two thousand and eighteen. Union dues have gone up, and tuition contribution has increased, more money is taken from their health benefits. Most teachers are making less what they did last year, and some tenure teachers are making less money than what they started with. I and many other students believe this is an issue that cannot be pushed aside and must be talked about negotiating now. Teachers at NHS are some of the best educators I've ever seen. Every teacher in the high school has been a problem positively impacted on their students. I personally can say that my teachers this year especially have made an impact on my education as well as my personal value and mentality. The first people I know of that are willing to sit down for the student and help them with anything are the teachers at NHS. Despite not having contracts, they continue to help students after school, during lunch, and go out of their way for students when they don't have to. They deserve to be recognized and respected for that. They deserve better than what they've been treated and frankly, better than what they've been paid these past couple of months. Like many people here today, I do not know the exact amount of any teacher's pay yet in NHS, but I do know that it is not right what they've been receiving. Students, especially juniors and incoming juniors, have expressed their opinions on this issue because it directly affects them. Teachers in the form of the protests they can take have started to not write letters of recommendations. I want to, I do want to reiterate that letters of recommendations are not the issue. While it does affect many students, it will only be fixed by one solution, as well as the many other issues that have occurred. That solution is not forcing teachers to write these letters. It is giving them the contracts they deserve. Thank you for your time, and I hope you take the opinions of those who spoke today into consideration.
That concludes the list that I have in front of me of people that were wishing to be heard. Are there any other students that wanted to be heard this evening that didn't write their name on the list? Okay, I'm actually coming. Thank you. Is there any sign in there that you're walking up as a sign sheet? Any just name your name if you just want to get together. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, you guys are good. Okay, I'm Rebecca G. I'm currently a junior at the high school. So you guys know how wonderful the teachers are at the high school and even elementary school and middle school. I know they've been practically in ways I can't even put in words. But I think, I just don't understand what, like I, I know here for teachers and the contract and merger, but I got some other students who aren't here, so these are the spots going on, what is actually going on? And nobody knows. Is that like confidential information, or can I ask what the actual problem is?
So the negotiations process is confidential. One of the things that, essentially, maybe the last thing to speak tonight, I'm going to elaborate on some of the things that we were talking about with the negotiations today. You know, we're willing to open up and keep an open invitation to the students. If you want to sit in the forum and talk about the negotiation process, we can kind of answer some questions for you. We cannot divulge any of the confidential information that is going between the association as well as the board. However, I think that from a general perspective, we can provide you with some pretty good information. Even there, on the, at the end of the stage, there's some frequently asked questions with regard to the negotiating process. And we're also going to be adding a tab on our website that will be able to put some, any information that we put in in general terms to, you know, help students as well as the public to understand the process that we go through, what we're doing as a negotiation. So it is difficult to understand every piece of what's happening because there are a lot of confidential pieces that are at a part in the negotiating process. So it is difficult to understand, you know, where the holdups are, where there may be some difficult situations to push through. But I think from a general perspective, it would give you a better idea of some of the challenges that are both sides based on the negotiation. So that's an open invitation that I'm going to provide to the students. If that's something that you would like to do, I know the committee for negotiations being on our side is willing to set time aside and make that happen. So you guys can coordinate with the superintendent as far. We'd be happy to sit down and answer some of the questions in the general forum. But hopefully, you'll be some insight of, you know, of the process.
Are there just certain points that you could make now that I can inform some of my other students? Or that I should just pick up the paper and then?
I'm sorry, I missed everything you were talking about.
Oh, sorry. Are there certain points that you can make now, or do you want to just get the paper? Just because I want to inform people who don't know, and even myself, about?
Sure. I would think the frequently asked questions that are there, it's, you know, it's a couple pages, but it really is a great Q and A about the process. From there, if you want to sit down as a group and have more Q and A, I'd be absolutely happy to do that. And I know, like I said, I know the rest of it, the committee would be willing to sit in as well and really talk through it. And again, unfortunately, we can't be specific, so you have to understand that. Though again, that there are confidential issues that we're discussing that are just not open to public discussion. But again, in general terms, I think that as a student body, you can get a better understanding of the negotiating process and give you some insight onto the steps of what takes place in order to accomplish a total possible contract.
Okay, that's all. Thank you for listening. Any of the teachers that are here, we appreciate you all.
Any other students wishing to share? Yes, please just hand your name in and then just give your name and address to the other group.
Hello, my name is Mickey O'Brien. I live at 46 Oakwood Terrace. You know, I'm not, I'm an average student at the high school. Okay, I wake up in the morning, and I don't want to go to school just like many, many of us. But I just feel like now going to school is almost a little more annoying, given I can stay here, but also there is a tension built up in the building. It's kind of upsetting. I went to school freshman year. It was like fun though. I go to school, then talk to my friends, learn, have fun. But it's just slightly annoying now to go and see my teachers just not as happy as they were three years ago. I've had my Italian teacher for four years now. If I'm wrong, they had a contract since 2013, right? And I think, and they're gone, and how many years have they had a contract now?
The initial contract, the most recent contract expired at the end of last June. Until the new, until the new contract is settled, they still operate under the old system contract.
Yeah, but it's kind of like if LeBron James didn't have a contract, why would business what he had in there? Kind of big cap.
Well, and I'm not going to debate this with you, but most of the time, basketball players are not playing under extended contract unless it's renegotiated and yes. But yeah, like they're not operating for that.
I don't, I don't know the extent of anything, but it's just a little upsetting to just walk into school and feel like it's just not as good as it was three years ago. You know, I, I'm very close with the majority of my teachers, I would like to feel. I've never had a problem with anybody at the high school that has had a big part in just sending me off to next year. And it's like, just annoying, you know? I, I don't know what else to say on that.
What I would say is, maybe you want to take part in the conversation if the students decide to put a hand together at the forum. Maybe that's something that, maybe you'll have some of your questions answered. Again, we couldn't be specific, so, you know, I want to make sure that with full disclosure, we can't talk about specifics. But I also feel like if you have a general idea of how the negotiating process works, it might help to help everyone understand the process and why challenges we face at times. Thank you.
Okay, any other students? And aside from that, we're approaching that half hour mark, so I'm going to ask if any of the students want to speak, if they can come up now and be signed in. Otherwise, this will be the last speaker.
My name is Bill Ruiz. I live on Long Island Street. For about fifteen years now. The goal that teachers play in my life has been, outside of work, outside of discretion. I can't put it back on because of my experiences. Teachers have always given me the idea that I can do things in life. And being someone who has always had confidence in myself, the, my ability to come up here and speak is solely because of my teachers. They've taught me the confidence that I need. They've taught me the independence that I need, to be able to be a citizen, be a person in society. Now, they helped me from the smallest things to the largest thing. I'm alive right here because of my teachers. From this assignment, okay, I'm working out with my teachers and get it done, to suicide attempt, a teacher's safety, through conversation, through guidance. And I'm not talking about guidance from the guidance counselor for a date, to be in the, I'm talking about the emotional support. My English teacher, for example. I didn't create a right, and the fall of last year, I did not want to be alive. I'll just say it, I did not want to be alive. She gave me this space where I could write, and I could put out all of my emotions. And I was able to express myself. And I'm alive because of that right now. I'm here speaking because my teachers gave me a space where I could be someone. I could be more than what I saw and heard. And our failure to address what teachers need, it doesn't seem right for me now. I know there are issues on both sides, budgetary issues, but the importance that teachers have had in life is ridiculous. I wonder how much I, anyway, I would give the world for my teachers. And I think all of you guys should listen. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to address the board? On any issue? Okay, speaking of, any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Where the Board of Education will be discussing matters in public discussion pursuant to NJSA 104-0, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education recessed in closing session is intended to discuss human matters and legal matters. The vered resolved result of discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of such agreement with the Board of Education or reasons for discussing such matters in closing sessions no longer exist. Action will be taken, and we need a motion to roll the closed.
We'll take the roll of closed.
Set it. All in favor? Any?
Get him, recruit. Thanks for staying.
Roll call, Mr. President.
Mrs. Sancheck-Morton?
This is you.
Dear?
Here.
Mr. Zizinski? Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Sular?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Marcela?
Here.
Mr. Riley, as to move on.
Yes, Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to move the fire table of resolution. As I listed, I saw movement, we're going to find a resolution.
Okay.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Sancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Gamaam?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Sular?
Okay, I'll move it.
Ms. Allen, he says. Mr. Marcela?
Yes. All right, so can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes our meeting.